Today's November 30th, 2016. The time is 10:00 a.m. I call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. Everyone please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge their flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Renata.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have five exoneration listings this morning for $5,089.88. Vouchers for General County, $32,378.89. 911, $210. Chestnut Ridge Park, $13,052.7. Camp Muffley, $2,042.89. Mason Dixon Park, $235.89. Assessor's valuation, $2750. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $21,817.12. 911, $12.43. Home confinement, $73,035.8. Chestnut Ridge Park, $226.35. Camp Muffley, $363.32. Mason Dixon Park, $188.05. Assessor's valuation, $229. For a total of $66,342.9. No budget revisions to approve. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the Planning Commission, Farm and Protection Board, Board of Zoning Appeals for the Western Planning District, River Road PSD, and we have one term expiring for the Mountain Line Transit Authority. That will expire on 12/31. Fiscal orders of November 30th and Statement of Services for Fiscal Commissioner George Armstead.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Introduction of new employees, personnel changes. Are there any?
No.
Okay. Now's the time for comments from the public. If everyone, anyone wants to speak, you have a right to speak. They stand, state your name and address, and you have at least three minutes.
David Biafor, Metro Properties, 6200 Mid-Atlantic Drive. I'm not exactly sure. I'm trying to get some information on the economic development office. There's supposed to be some money aside somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000 to $500,000 for infrastructure.
Coal, coal waste.
Coal waste, infrastructure money. I understand Steve Cowbert was able to get some infrastructure. We are purchasing 13 acres from the Mon County Development Authority below the airport. We just purchased the office building that had been built there 25 years ago. We're going to renovate that and put another building there. And then there's 13 acres in front of the landfill that's been for sale for 25 years. We're going to do another business park type, like a western business park. Businesses, storage buildings, facilities, between $2 million and $3 million. And we have the contract. Now we can get you the paperwork. But I was under the impression that we, originally, the Mon County Development Authority would rebate the money. I was misinformed and now understand that we were to come to the county commission and ask for monies for redevelopment or for infrastructure.
Economic development, infrastructure, yeah.
Infrastructure money. So I just would like to know what I need to do for the application and apply. We're looking at, you know, say about 4% of the entire job of the project, you know, probably about $90,000 bucks in this, you know, or if it's the infrastructure, it's probably closer to about 15% to 20%. But we're looking for $90,000. We understand that there's, the money's there for this. This property, again, has been non-tax pay in 25 years. We're going to put it on the tax map as we do everything else. Pay lots of taxes. So tell me what I can do, or if you tell me, direct me where to go to fill an application to apply for.
There was an application approved by the Development Authority. Now, you don't necessarily need to go through the Development Authority, but they have an application. I don't know if we have a separate application. We always refer to the Development Authority. So there's a simple, there's a simple-
They sent me to you.
No, 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 no. I'm not saying, I'm not saying the final decision. I'm saying the application.
Okay, so I get the application from the Development Authority?
You get the copy of the application or arrange it for Renata. And basically, you're, any infrastructure development, you're, we can give up this 50% of what you invest in infrastructure from that fund. That fund is exclusively used for infrastructure of economic development, can't be used for anything else. So your, your project certainly would be, can't speak-
To the building parts of a couple million bucks or not, but the $500,000, $600,000 of dirt, sewer water, storm, pond, stormwater, I could possibly get, apply for the $90,000.
Right, right.
Okay, so go to the Mon County Development-
Well, you can ask them for the application or Renata, just, just get, get him an application and get it to you.
Yeah.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah. And then, and then that's-
I'm on the right corner.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's exactly what that fund is, be useful.
And what kind of process? She emails me the application and I tell them?
You just fill, you fill out the application and it will be, you know, it will be heard like anything else. Here's an application to draw from this fund. This is what, this is what's been expended on, on the infrastructure. And that'll be up to the commission to decide to give you 50% or 40% or 30% or whatever.
And one thing, it's not what I understood too, and I've learned about this again, never asked for any grants, never gotten anything, done anything like this. But what would be nice is the public to know, I understood this to be that there's been a lot of money there that's been used at Mylan Park, which is dynamite. It's fantastic. But I think there's probably some small tracts of land or areas, whether it be, whatever part of the county, that $50,000, $75,000, $100,000, $150,000 could change and really put some taxes in. I mean, I've known about a lot of people that would run a sewer line that would help. I think this should be advertised or somehow put in the paper. I mean, if the money's there, let's put it to good use. And, you know, maybe, you know, you can, you know, get some more back in there. But I understood that there's been a lot sitting there for a long time. And again, I don't know, it's just what I heard. But surely, any economic development is good, and any little bit of help on something that's there just spurs something else.
Yeah, it's, it's, the legislative intent of that was to allow people to recoup the infrastructure that would be benefiting the general public and not just the tract.
Exactly.
And that, and that should be promoted. I, I think that's good advice.
Thank you all, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any further public comments? Any further public comments? Hearing none, we'll close that session. And Colleen Coon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a grant application for the West Virginia Culture and History Arts Grant for, to make Mason Dixon Park's amphitheater more ADA acceptable.
Yeah, this is something we've been working on for a while.
We're requesting $50,000 for this project.
Move for approval. Second?
I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Yeah, this would be a good addition to, to allow for a lot of programs, and we're hoping to get it done in time for the anniversary out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Town of Granville, Mayor, I see you here, Ron Marybeth. You move up the table if you like. Annexation by minor boundary adjustment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, my name's Ron Snyder. I'm the city manager with the town of Granville. And we're here today to present an annexation proposal under West Virginia 865, annexation by minor, minor boundary adjustments. I put together the information in that booklet that should tell you about everything we've done up to date so far. And as per Commissioner Hawkins' request, I have a canvas of the businesses in that area, and I've got everybody's approval except two, and one of them's riding the fence, the other one never responded. Well, I have two that never responded to the survey. The maps of the proposed annexation area are in the back of that book. Pretty well details what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish. Our main goal was to firm up our boundaries and provide a way that our emergency services and the street department can get from one jurisdiction to stay in our jurisdiction while headed to the town center.
Is the code section in here?
865.
Is it in here? You might pass me a copy?
Yes, sir.
Because we're, we're, we just do a preliminary review at this stage.
Right.
Would you like, Colleen, to make a couple of copies?
Yes, for each of us.
And I have some.
Well, yes, we'll have questions and stuff.
Okay.
I'm just letting him.
Will entertain any questions you may have concerning?
Is there, is there anything else you want to say about it?
I think we've met the minimum criteria for annexation by boundary adjustment under the 865 of the West Virginia Code. And I recommend that the commission take this to the next level, skate it in the public hearing. I've also included the letters that I sent out, and they actually, one of the, one of the businesses in the area said, since we're going to be part of Granville, we want to actually get involved in the community events, and that was Starbucks. They want to help us with shop with the cop. They're going to, yeah, they're going to send eight people and all the coffee you can get.
That's pretty good.
May I just add one?
Oh, yes.
When we were at the work session, Commissioner Hawkins suggested that we consider the Osage area that dial-in has been opened. There were two prominent residents from, longtime residents from Osage that came down. Ron prepared a document, and we went over the document. They had a lot of questions. It's my understanding that they're still, I'm not questioning, but passing the information along, I guess, to other residents down there. They asked me if we were willing to go down and have a meeting with them, which we certainly are. But they have our contact information and my personal cellphone information, so, I mean, they can reach me at any time, but I've not heard back from them.
If it's any benefit, I'll be happy to attend the meeting.
Excellent.
If they request one.
Yes.
You know, we went over coenforcement.
I understand.
We went over, you know, services that we could provide, things, you know, that they would be required to do if they had a business down in that area. I mean, they had a lot of questions, and we answered all of their questions, and they, we've just not heard back from them. So I don't know at this point whether they would be, that's not included in this.
I understand.
But you had asked us to open that dial-in.
Then one thing the commission may take into, a couple things the commission may take into consideration. One of them is that the state police have gone down the very minimum manning due to the economic situation, which is going to put a strain on the sheriff's department in that area. They may get a call. In that area, they could be in Blacksburg. Take them a half hour to get there. We'll have officers, if we consider that a zone, we'd have officers in that zone all the time. And we also, as the fire department, the ISO 3 is really going to help them out a lot as far as insurance goes. And we intend, one of the intentions of the fire department is to build a fire training center at the Osage building, or the Fire Ben Center, because there is nothing in this county, nowhere to go to train home to a fireman.
Right, that's wrong.
And we, as a municipality, cannot invest money in such an endeavor if that is not within the city limits. And that's something that's, I think, needed.
Yeah, they learned that in Greenbrier County.
Yeah.
Case right on point on that.
We would like to-
They were even trying to make the people pay it out of their own pockets.
How'd they go for it?
Well, yeah, they got it, they got it set aside.
But the town would like to invest in this training facility, which would be open to all 13 volunteer fire departments within the county and law enforcement as well.
Questions?
Yeah. Good news, bad news. I spent a week.
Well, just give me the good news, forget the bad news.
Well, actually, it's to help you out.
Okay.
There is a problem, there, there needs to be a clarification. And what I did was ask the assessor's office, Mike Paul, to come in, because we wanted a clarification of exactly what the county had approved, what was supposed to be approved, and the map that was done. And what I can tell you after hours of research is there is a stumbling block, because there's a partial area that the map that CTO did did not meet what the county had requested. And there's a letter in 2005 that stated to redo this, and it was never done. So my first recommendation would be, and without going into specific details, but there's a specific area right that, that's in question, that even they say is in question by the bridge and where plot number two is, plot number three is where you extended down the road. Because Star City goes only to the 815-foot-
High Watermark.
High Watermark. Okay, you went down under, but there's a question about whether this, what was actually the area in that one portion. So I would ask, I mean, there's no way that we could make a decision, and I would recommend, until we get this map cleared up to the actual meets and bounds that were approved. And I have, and you can find all that. But that has to be done first before we can make a decision. And I'll tell you the reason why. Because there's this gray area of Star City that is now asking that they might want to consider. If it's done, and I don't want to say which way, but if it's done correctly, we'll be able to answer that question very simply. Right now, we cannot answer that question that Star City, you're making it look like Star City appears, has to go through Granville because you're there. But that's not what the map shows, but there's some grayish area in the writing of it. And we need to clear that up before we move on. And so that's why it's good news, bad news. We would have to clear that up anyway. But that is something that I wanted to throw out, that in learning, because it was becoming, I mean, we spent hours, and it's very difficult to understand, and it may have to end up in court of, well, okay, well, we're going to have to make a decision of the intent of what the county commission wanted and what happened with the map, if that makes any sense to you.
Perfect sense.
Were we ever notified in 2005? Because I don't, I've got any course-
Yes, there is a letter.
There's a letter in our file. I can get you a copy of all of that.
Yeah. And I don't know why I can't, that's the one letter I can't find. Yeah, there was a letter in 2004, then 2005, and the map that we had is not the correct map. So what was asked was that another map be done. We, we went through the records and found that letter. But it was never, for whatever reason, was not done, maybe because they didn't think it was needed to be redone. But we, we'll be able to show you that map.
Well, I'd like to see the letter.
Letter, okay.
Because, I, I mean, if we would have been notified, I'm sure that we would have been on that right away.
We found, I, well-
But, but that's okay. I mean, that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, it's not negative. It's just, it's a clarification.
Well, it's something that has to be done.
Yeah, sure.
Here, here, I, I came into this office with this annexation craziness, and I'm about, I'm leaving with it. Two things, Tom.
Yes.
And I, I remember, I remember a big part of Phil Gougeau's, Judge Gougeau's order was that the county commission, when hearing annexation cases, cannot become their own investigator. They've got, they've got to present a matter of fact, a matter of fact, pointed out a couple, a couple of problems with that.
Okay.
Now, do I totally agree with the way the interpretation was with the two prior commissioners? No, I don't agree with it. And I don't agree that that's what Judge Gougeau meant. But I wanted to point that out.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, the issue, the issues that you bring up are the very issues that needs to be dealt with in the public hearing when all parties are properly notified and heard. Today, we are limited to three things, and three things only. Whether it's a complete application, and that's 1, 2, 5, which I just want to step by step, and 1, 2, 1, 2, 5 of this, 1, 2, 6 of this, shows that they've covered all those paragraphs. Now, they went ahead and covered the other things we have to consider later on.
Okay.
Which includes that.
Yeah.
That what you just brought up is included in, which, number, whether-
Number two, an accurate map showing meets and bounds.
Right. Well, meets and bounds, and also there's, there's one in here as to whether any of the property is claimed by another municipality.
Okay.
All those are in those, those later presentations.
Okay.
And so I just want to tell you, be aware of that.
Okay.
I don't agree that, I don't agree that you violated what we're allowed to do, but that was, that was an issue of debate in the past.
Okay.
So I just push that as a caution. The, the other thing we need to determine is whether the annexation could be efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished under Section 2 or 4 of this article. That, that is, that's an issue that's still setting in the Supreme Court, and I don't know whether they're going to, you know, this started over six years ago, and they never did.
I'm not sure I understand what it means.
Well, that was, that was my whole basis as to why, you know, because it's, it's confusing, because basically, it interprets if you hold, the way it's been interpreted is if you hold an election and you get voted down, then it cannot efficiently and cost-effectively be accomplished. So the question was whether accomplished related to the annexation or whether accomplished related to the consideration. That Supreme Court will decide that. I, the circuit judge has already decided that, and I think that's all we can go on here right now. The circuit court judge decided that that interpretation made by the city of Westover was correct. So that's basically the way we have to do it to the Supreme Court, because circuit court does have jurisdiction over us. So those are, and that, and that means that the, that those are the, those are the only two things we're considering. And the only thing we're doing is opening it up-
So we can start.
-for public comment and presentation, so all these issues can be brought to light, and it can be done both at the public hearing and at follow-up meetings.
Gotcha.
You're not limited to one single meeting.
Oh, okay.
It's not, you don't have to make a decision after the first meeting. You can have additional meetings to answer additional questions. So procedurally, I just wanted to make that clarification.
And just for the record, I want to clear, again, I'm not a lawyer, so when I read the proper meets and bounds-
Well, I understand.
I thought I was going to try and resolve an issue before we had an issue to try and speed up the process one way or the other. So that's what all I was trying to do is clarify. And the more we found out, the more we have a situation we have to clear up in the county. Okay, so that's one, that's why.
Right, right, yeah.
Does one situation affect the other situation?
It may, but that's what the public hearings are for.
Right.
To bring all the parties in, to have people say, to have, that's, this, this point is just saying, are we going to have a public hearing and start hearing the, the different issues before us? That's the question. The sole question is, is this complete? Is this complete application? I just went through it step by step, and, and it does meet all the 1, 2, 7 standards here.
Right.
And that, and that, and then the only other thing I said was whether it was efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished. And the circuit court judge says that basically the city makes that determination, and they keep, if they believe that it's would cost too much or excess, that then this commission should abide by the city. So I assume that your town council voted and passed on this.
Yes, sir, they did.
So they would have made, they would have made that decision.
I would say then that we would move to accept the application and then set a date for a public hearing. Second?
I have a motion in the second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. They'll set a public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I ask just one question?
Sure.
Is there anything then that we need to do between, or am I, if you can't answer that, that's up to-
Well, yeah, no, I can answer it. I can answer.
In regard to what you were referencing.
Well, not only that, you need to, and he already answered this directly, but you need to look at any, any particular challenges to any parts of that. You have, you, the, the town has now had, has to convince this commission that all seven of those categories have been met. And that, and in doing that, you need to figure out, you know, if Star City's going to come in and challenge it, if, you know, some other people are going to, how to respond to that, because it's the town's burden to prove all seven of those, all seven of those steps.
And we really wouldn't know that until the public hearing anyway.
You wouldn't know that, but you could get a good feel. He's already brought up one issue. You might want to talk to, you might want to talk to Jimmy Smith at 911. You might want to spend some more time with Mike Paul as well. You might want to talk to the county clerk. Make sure you got all the minutes that covered all the aspects of that. There's a lot of preparation you need to do, but you need to remember that it's your burden to prove those items.
Okay, that's fine. I just request copies of those letters so that we can-
Yes, we thought we wanted, yes.
Yes, our leading counsel and our engineers to look at that.
Thank you.
Did you guys get a chance to look at that DVD I gave you?
No, I did not. I was working on it.
It's fine.
I'm sorry.
No, you didn't look at it either.
Well, I lost my last wife in the divorce who would have turned on the machine for me to see it. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I, before the next meeting, I'll make sure that-
It's just kind of neat, I thought you guys would do that.
Yeah.
So will the public, will the public hearing be during a regular meeting, or is it set aside from?
Well, it's, it's, I guess we'll try, try to, what we, what we did in the past, we had two. We had one during the morning and then one in the evening.
And it's not part of the commission meeting?
Well, it could be. I mean, the 10 o'clock could be like, we, we have public hearings in our agenda sometime. It could be, but in the past, we've always had, you know, and what you all decide, but we had one in the morning and one in the evening, so everyone had an opportunity to speak. It's important, it's important also because interested party, a lot of people don't realize that interested party are the citizens of Granville as well.
Now, what's this public hearing, is set the date and the time? Do I need to go through and post that with the five, at least five businesses with, okay?
Yep.
Public notice, public hearing, blah, blah, blah?
Yeah. And then you need to have a certification submitted to the commission that that was done and where it was done.
Now, how do I do that?
You've got a paper and just have it notarized if you did post it.
Okay.
And then you have to list the locations that you had posted. Do you all want to set dates for public hearing today, or are you?
Yeah.
What are you going to do?
Well, I think we could have, uh-
It'll have to be posted as a class two legal notice, so once a week for two weeks.
Okay.
You're talking, you're talking January 12th.
See, I would, that's why I'm saying it's probably better in January, because with the Christmas holidays, I don't want someone to complain that-
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
By the time you get the notices done and notarized, and then you get the posted, you got posted at the locations and everything, I don't see how you could do it in less than six, six, eight weeks.
January 12th probably. What about January 10th?
That's a two-step.
Oh, what about the 11th? Oh, what about the 11th? January 11th?
And then seven o'clock at night or 6:30 at night?
Have it's...
10 a.m. and then 6:30.
6:30, yeah, the same day. Well, you wouldn't, well, you wouldn't put it at 10 a.m., would you?
If we're going to have two, we'll have...
Well, let's say 10:30. We'd better put it at 10:30. Yeah. Right. 10:30 and 6:30 right now. January.
Okay, you want to make that a motion?
Okay, a move that we have two public hearings on January 11th at 10:30 in the morning and 6:30 in the evening at the public's, the sheriff's building.
I'll have to make sure that those are...
If, we will, if, if possible, to have in the sheriff's building, but we will see. We'll decide it, okay. So, if you're, okay, just one second here. I'll second the motion for discussion. If this is on a Wednesday, correct? Yes. We're having a meeting and we're going to move or we...
We have done that.
We've done that, that's why we'll see, I mean, we'll, we'll play it by...
I want to make sure that that's available. If space is available, I would suggest we do that.
Yeah.
I understand.
It was a lot easier just to do it down there, yeah.
Okay. Just question.
I have a motion in the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, thank you. All right, correspondence, request by Rally for Change Committee for use of the Courthouse Square. Rally for Change Committee, what do we got?
Just a typical application that we have, um, because they're not, it's not a farmer wanting to sell, we bring that to your attention for you to approve. They would want to use it this evening. Um, we just got the application on the 21st. From 5:30 to 7:30.
For tonight, isn't it?
Yeah.
What's the...
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion in the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, thank you. Any further correspondence?
No.
Unfinished business.
None.
Any unfinished business? New business. Consideration of establishing the Mon, Monongahy Historical Society as a pass-through for donations to the Courthouse Square renovation project. Ed?
Uh, this was discussed at the last Historical Society meeting and was voted on and passed, that they would be willing to be a pass-through for any donation that would be done on behalf of the public. And this way, it's a 501(c), the society is and Monongahy County Commission is not. That way, if you would like to make a donation to sponsor something on the Courthouse Square, this way it would be tax deductible for businesses and private citizens. So, to that end, I would move that we go ahead and allow that as a commission.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, thank you. Any further new business? Reports from elected officials, Carrie, you have anything? Ron, do you have anything further?
No, I haven't said more than I normally do in a week.
And Dave Ladd, is Dave out there still?
No, he took off.
Gone, how about you, Mike? You have anything for us?
Just been talking, speaking with Ed, some about the Historical Preservation Society here in Monongahy County, trying to develop a map specifically for all the historical sites in Monongahy County. I spoke with the State Historical Preservation Society and it's, it's technically protected data. They don't give it out to just anybody, I'm not sure why. You'd think it would be public data, but they're actually giving me a copy of it, specifically since I, you know, requested it from the County Commission, just saying that we're trying to develop the map. That way, we can get an idea of, you know, community members that live around historical sites or something like that, if they're any interested in that. We can get that back to the Mon County Preservation Society, so...
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good. I don't know why that would be protected.
I, I don't either. It's not like it's Department Homeland Security.
Security, yeah. Homeland Security.
At risk.
Hey, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Y'all have anything? Tom?
Uh, yeah, three quick issues. One, last night, we had an excellent meeting and I do want to thank West TV, who's going to be promoting it on YouTube. Uh, we had about 20 people show up, ask some good questions. But people got a little hint of what the Courthouse Square could look like in the future and I, and I'll let Ed talk anymore about it. But I was real pleased with the, the response by the individuals and a couple of the ideas that we came up with. I really liked the idea of making it modern, making it safe, and at the same time, keeping the historical background that all three of us requested. Uh, the second thing is, uh, I'm proud to say that on December 7th, the worldwide premiere of Ageless Friends is now going to happen in three countries, in Canada, America, and the Netherlands. And basically, we have two ways that you could go to the internet. One is by renting it for 72 hours for $3.50. And the other is buying the documentary for $10. And what's also nice is $0.50 from the rental and $1 from the buying the movie. We'll go to one of those, well, we'll go to the three organizations that we've, you know, funded. So, we're really excited about that. Um, and that will be, uh, I, I've already passed that on, so that will be announced. Um, the third thing is, uh, I'm going to ask for an executive session for, due to a legal matter, it shouldn't take more than five or 10 minutes, but since all three of us are here, we have to make a decision about something. And that was some information that we received.
What's the code section?
Yeah, we have the...
You have, read, read the code section. Make a motion and read the code section.
On my sticky note.
This one, show it to me.
6984, uh, dash...
Two, dash, B, dash, nine.
Yeah.
Deal with the legal matter.
Deal with the legal matter, it would only take that, that's a minute.
Second.
I have a motion in the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, we're going into executive session, it says it'll be about five minutes.
Yeah. Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
I have a motion in the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, we're out of executive session. Ed?
Yes, uh, the meeting I think went very well last night. I was really happy with the presentation that Mike Mills made and the answering of the questions. And I think, you know, the, the, the respect with which everything is being handled, I think is a plus. Uh, you're, you're going to be very impressed if you haven't seen it, but when you do see the, the real plans, when they're finally finished, then I think it's going to be great. Uh, did meet yesterday with the Bow Park WBU County Commission Coalition. This meeting went exceptionally well. Um, we're looking toward establishing a budget and then going ahead and making plans for next year's bookings at Hazelwood and McQueen. Now, pursuant to that, I would like to place on the agenda that we go ahead and actually vote on what we had discussed at the, the work session on terms of budgetary funding.
Oh.
Okay? Yes, you could do, yeah, that's fine, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, then on Monday, uh, did go out to watch the cabin being set at Mason Dixon Park. And I want to thank Bobby Doyle and our county crew, as well as Grant Snyder, Snyder Excavating. Uh, it went exceptionally well. Uh, I don't think there were any, uh, any mishaps. Uh, and right now, I'm looking forward to seeing a great historic restoration out at the park. Things are really going to be happening out there. I think the people in the western end of the county are going to look to Mason Dixon Park and say, wow, this is a park now. Thank you.
No pots of coal found in the bottom of the cabin.
Basin's still over, huh?
Basin's still over. Okay, I really don't have anything. That motion adjourned.
So, move?
Second.
Motion in the second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, adjourned, thank you.